It is seven o'clock, so I'd like to call our meeting to order. Jim, just for housekeeping, Bill's the co-host so that he can manage stuff while you're presenting, that might make things a little easier. And so the, I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. Our first order of business is calling our meeting to order. So with that, Matt Lowery.
Here.
Bill Spalding.
Here.
Jim Hogan.
Here.
And Kevin York.
Here.
Terrific, and myself here. That's terrific. Second item of business before we open for our multi-family zoning overlay conversation is review and approval of our October twenty-fourth minutes. Does anybody have any questions, comments, edits? Okay, not hearing none. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to approve the meeting minutes from who?
October twenty-fourth.
October twenty-fourth. And I also would like to add that Susan, thank you there. It's a wonderful job of capturing all the comments from our public forum.
Very, very much agreed. And I appreciate capturing everyone's addresses too. Is there a second?
A second.
Alright, thank you Kevin. And all in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So all in favor. Terrific. We are set to open our discussion at seven oh five. So I want to adhere to that. The. What am I doing wrong here? Alright. The, the other items on our agenda are pretty straightforward tonight. I will use the time to call people's attention to a couple of things in the notes on our agenda. First of all, we still, we have it. The town plant, planning position is still open. It's been changed to senior planner. And the link is in our, on our agenda. And so we'd love, you know, any and all applicants, I think it'd be a valuable position for the town to have and to assist the planning board. We do also have other links to other priorities of the planning board in the town. Particularly MBA to communities that we're talking about tonight, our master plan. And this, the Wakefield zoning bylaw review committee, which we, we'll get an update at the end of tonight's meeting, at the end of. And yeah, just, I think two, two items of note and in the Wakefield item today, first of all, town meeting is Saturday, the eighteenth. Eight AM. And the Boys and Girls Club is offering childcare. So that's a wonderful addition and that, that should help. And Senator Jason Lewis, our state senator, on Monday night, November twentieth at six thirty is hosting a Zoom call, talking about his community conversations, discussing our housing challenges here in Massachusetts and greater Boston and and within his district. So I think that's a very valuable opportunity to continue this discussion and expand it when we're talking about all the housing needs here in Wakefield and throughout eastern Massachusetts and the Commonwealth and all of the other issues that are interrelated. So.
Mr. Chair, can I make one more announcement about town meeting?
Yes.
That Article seven on the town warrant, if, if you don't know about it, it's Wakefield is considering adopting a specialized energy code. So if you don't know about it, please log on to the town website and check it out. You can just search up and just type in energy and it will pop up this awesome graphic that was put together to explain what it means, what it's all about, and then you can form your own opinion and share that at town meeting if you need to.
That's wonderful. That's a, thank you very much for, for calling that out. And it is five after seven, so I do want to open our public discussion about the MBTA three A community overlay. And I wanted to offer just a few words as introduction. The, we're really eager to have a productive conversation about the proposed overlay and what it means for Wakefield. We're really delighted that we've got thirty-four people on tonight's call and really eager to have this productive discussion, get your questions, your concerns, and really hope that you can help us refine this proposal further. And second, I want to thank Jim and Matt and Aaron and everyone in the working group for all of the research and the hard work to, to get us to this point. This is, it's been a big lift and it really is a valuable contribution to the town to be able to push this forward. And if you didn't see it on Sunday, the Boston Globe did a really in-depth article about the town of Brookline and their discussions around MBTA communities three A. And it really is a lot of similarities, just in the same way that we're coping with these issues and and wrestling with it. And so I really feel there's, you know, a lot of good intention and discussion, and these issues really are universal across the Commonwealth. And lastly, just some housekeeping. We want to hear from everyone. When you do speak, please state your name and your address clearly. And if possible, please turn your camera on. We'll, we'll make every effort to ensure that everyone has a chance to speak. And if you've already spoken, we'll circle back to you after everyone's had a chance to speak first. And definitely please share the mic so that we can go on. And with that, I want to turn this over to Vice Chair Jim Hogan to walk us through the presentation.
Thank you very much, Theo. And as Theo mentioned, my name is Jim Hogan. I'm the Vice Chair of the Plane Board as well as the Chairperson of the working group that was established. Can everyone see my, see the presentation that's been pulled up on the screen? Come. So just for, is a high level introduction of what we're talking about tonight. So there is a state law that was passed in twenty twenty that requires communities to establish a multifamily zoning district in communities that are serviced by the MBTA. You, you may hear this as section three A or forty A depending on the different areas. But basically what this law that the state passed requires is that communities are serviced by MBTA have a multifamily zoning district where zoning allows multifamily housing as of right. So you cannot have a discretionary permit on the basis of it being multifamily zoning. So Wakefield has convened a working group that consists of members of Town Council, the Planning Board, ZBA, Environmental Sustainability Committee, and a citizen who volunteered to evaluate the impacts of this law and come up with the multifamily zoning district that's being proposed. And that will be discussed further in this presentation. The, one of the key things that the working group decided as we were looking at this in terms of how we comply with the requirements of the law, while making this work for Wakefield, was we felt as if it was really important to exclude some of our commercial parcels, but cite enough of this zoning in our, in around our downtown. While this is a requirement from the state, the working group felt we could take this as an opportunity to have some gentle upzoning in our downtown area where we have both the Wakefield commuter rail station, so well some good bus infrastructure along Main Street in order to help increase the amount of foot traffic in our downtown area to support our local businesses. So we'll get into that further in this presentation, but that's, that's fundamentally what we're talking about. So just to talk in level set with people what we're talking about. When we're talking about an as-of-right development, which is required under this state law, it is, it means that you cannot deny a building permit for a pro, development project on the basis that it's a multifamily. You can have other components of zoning that are required to be met, but you cannot require a discretionary or a special permit to be issued in order to allow that, that development to move forward. So in this case, a special permit is a discretionary permit, which means that the town would have the option to say that the development is not allowed on the basis that it's multifamily alone. Multifamily, in the context of this law, means three units or more. You may hear other people talking about multifamilies, larger scale developments, but for this law and the multifamily district that we're proposing, it is a four-unit maximum that we can get further into the presentation. But that's, you know, when we say multifamily in the context of three A, we're not talking about the larger developments that people may have seen around town that are being developed under alternative zoning processes. So what if we elect to not comply? And this is one of that has come up a number of times with, in the Wakefield as well as other communities, but when the law was first announced, there were a number of programs, the Housing Choice Initiative, Global Capital Funds, and Mass Works Infrastructure Programs that are identified as if you are in non-compliance, you, you as a community will not be eligible for those programs. You know, recent, in the recent past, the last three, past three years, Wakefield received three and a half million dollars from those original set of programs. Additionally, I think that my understanding, talking to Aaron Kukindia from the town, is that we had additional funds that have been approved within the near term, you know, in the last couple of months, or during the process of being up to half a million dollars through those programs. Additionally, since twenty twenty, in March of twenty-three, an additional fourteen programs are added to the list that non-compliant towns will be ineligible to receive. And from what we can tell, the, the town's town leadership level, the state's serious about this. They, there's already been a couple interim milestones that towns and communities have to adhere to. And communities that did not comply with the state have already had funding sources identified and were going to be ineligible until they got in compliance. So they are serious about this. If additionally, the Attorney General has threatened legal action against non-compliant communities on the basis that the laws written that a community shall have a multifamily district, not, it's discretionary. So there's immediate impact as it relates to grants from the state level that you're not going to be eligible for. Additionally, there may be some other impacts that are a little more undefined, unclear. I heard one line thinking, saying that the state said that if you don't have a multifamily district defined, then that means that your multifamily districts are allowed as of right across your entirety of your town. Don't know how real that is, but it's these types of things that we understand that from the state level that they are serious about making sure that communities comply with this law. So what are we actually talking about? For Wakefield specifically, there are a number of criteria in terms of where, what level of service from MBTA is being provided to a town, how much existing housing stock, all this complicated multipliers, but without getting into the math and all the weeds, for our community, the state is looking for a district that would have the capacity to have one thousand six hundred and ninety-six units zoned as of right. It's not a production mandate, so it's not saying you have to build this much. We just have to have a zoning area that would allow that many units to be delivered as of right. For Wakefield, at the minimum density, fifteen units an acre, which is important for some other components that we're going to talk about later, that would mean that we'd need a hundred and fourteen acres for this zone. It needs to be located within a half mile of our two commuter rail stations. They can't have any age restrictions, so you can't say that this is a senior-only community, for example. And it has to be suitable for families with children, so you can't make it so it's only studios are allowed. Again, as a reminder, in this context, multifamily means buildings that are three plus for units. So what do we have zoned today in Wakefield? Right now, Wakefield currently has no zoning district where multifamily as defined by the state are allowed as of right. Two-thirds of the land in Wakefield is zoned for single families only. We do have some two, two families that are allowed as of right in our general residence, mixed-use, some of the areas, you know, business in the downtown area. You know, they, the districts that allow two family as of right are about twenty percent of the town land today. Again, that doesn't count for the multifamily for the state because the state's looking for three plus, but we already have some two allowable as of right. So the working group we convened, we reviewed the different options, all the different components. The current map on the screen is what the working group is proposing. So you can see that it's really centered around the downtown business area excluding business properties that front North Ave, albeit Maine, and it has a little bit of extra area zone on either side of the business area. On the thought process that this in between North and Maine, that's where a lot of our downtown businesses are. We've got the commuter rail station. We've got a good bus route along Main Street. So that's where our transfer, good transportation hubs are. And then we wanted to have, we felt it was appropriate to have this gentle level of density and potentially having more people live near our downtown to help drive foot traffic, support our downtown business areas that would really be helpful for the community. So if you bear with me, I'll go to the next page. What I'm showing on this page right here is the red is what's zoned our business district where two families are already allowed as of right. The yellow shade is our general residence, which of two families are also allowed as of right. So you can see there's a lot of overlap. The purple you're seeing is our industrial zones, and then the white, which is really mostly only on the left side of this, this shows where it's only a single-family residence. So there's a lot of overlap with our existing business and general residents where two families are already allowed as of right. And we're talking about going up to four for this zone. So we felt as, as a working group, that while we don't necessarily love all the, the particularities of what the state is requiring, we felt this, this is a good opportunity to try to do something thoughtful that would help support our downtown business areas and locate, if we do have growth within town, where would we want it as a community? Now I'll pause here and I'll just say, this is centered on Wakefield Junction. At the time that we started this process, we thought that we were going to be proposing a Wakefield Junction and a Greenwood area. For some reasons as it relates to the density of the district, Greenwood did not work because the existing lots around Greenwood, based on the peculiarities of the law and how you have to calculate your minimum density, you have to take the lots as currently, you know, existing. And the lots in Greenwood are significantly larger than the ones around Wakefield Junction. So in order to comply with the law and that minimum density, you'd have to have bigger as-of-right units. You have to have up to sixty, six units as of right in Greenwood. We as the working group felt that wasn't consistent with the community character in Greenwood. We felt that four units around Wakefield Junction was a lot more similar to the existing community character, and that's why we got away from Greenwood. So what are the dimensional requirements? So what this is showing is that the zone that we're talking about, the post-multifamily district, has two thousand three hundred and fifty-five units. The requirements from the state law is the sixteen ninety-six that I mentioned earlier. The allowable units per acre, so the district that we are proposing provides sixteen point three units per acre as of right. The minimum from the state law is fifteen, so we felt that was pretty close. And then we also included in this, on this slide, the proposed multifamily district that we're evaluating compared to the existing mixed-use zoning, which is on the books in Wakefield today for a garden apartment. So that is, that requires a special permit, so it's slightly different permitting mechanism, but you can see the number of stories, three is the same. The max building height, thirty-five is the same. And the parking spaces, one and a half parking spaces per unit is the same as the existing zoning that we have on the books today in Wakefield. The difference being is that this would be allowable as of right for four units where our existing multi-use or mixed-use zoning, rather, garden apartments, you have to have a special permit. Which means that you have to go to the ZBA and go through that discretionary permitting process, but all those other dimensional requirements are the same. So what, what does this actually mean in terms of, you know, how, how is the community going to change? So what we've done is, we looked around, so with some mapping tools that we have, and we found examples of units that have four units that exist already today and in the community, in, in this zoned area. So you can see, there's an example of a four-unit on Pleasant Street on a five thousand square foot lot. Four units on Richardson Ave, on a four thousand square foot lot. So on Wakefield Ave, there's a three-unit building. And then on Avon Street, there's a four-unit building. So these are examples of buildings that exist today that are three and four units on lots within these proposed, the post-proposed districts. And you can see on this slide, Chestnut Street, this is likely the, the outcome of this proposed district. This is a three-unit on a roughly seven thousand square foot lot that was completed in twenty twenty-two. This one was actually a conversion, so it wasn't a, a new building. But it's probably, these are the types of things that we likely see that would be, you know, instead of requiring a special permit, they would be allowed as of right in this proposed district. So you can see for kind of development context, you can see that all those examples that we pulled up, you can see them located, you know, they're all in these, this proposed district. So townwide, we have approximately eleven thousand units of housing. The current housing units in the district that we're proposing has sixteen forty-one. The proposed housing capacity under this district would be two thousand three hundred and fifty-five. So the proposed district will allow an additional seven hundred units. If you took all the units that currently exist, wipe them down to zero, and then all, what was allowable as of right represents about six point three percent of the housing stock. You know, I would underwrite the likelihood of it being we're going to deliver a hundred, seven hundred additional units from this overlay district to be exceedingly low. As a reminder, there's a number of the single-family houses in this district that exist today, and you're allowed two units as of right already. So it's not like we see every, every building getting, that's a single-family house that's allowable to be two, being knocked down and upgraded to two units under the existing zoning that exists today. So will we see more of that type of activity occur when four units are allowable as of right? Maybe, but I don't think it's going to happen to a hundred percent of these units. These are all do not production mandates from the state. It's just you have to have a zone that would allow that in theory. And then this, this final proposed zone is a hundred and forty-five acres, which is about three percent of the town's land. So some of the reasons why that this is, this, why are we even talking about this? The statewide, the three, the section three A law was passed to address a region-wide housing crisis that I'm sure many people on the phone can, can attest to. You know, there's an estimated two hundred thousand unit housing shortage in Massachusetts right now. And everyone, everyone understands that the lack of housing in Massachusetts is a major pain point for people up and down the socioeconomic stat ladder, and it's something that the state is very worried about impacting our, the ability for our economy to be competitive, as well as frankly, for anyone with kids to actually have their kids stay here and not end up moving somewhere where it's cheaper. From Wa- Wakefield specific, we, when we looked at this as a working group and we were looking at how do we make this law work for Wakefield? We wanted to center the district, the, this, this district. And if we are going to direct and have any additional development, we wanted it to be around our downtown business district. We thought that increasing foot traffic by having more people live next to our businesses downtown would increase the support of our businesses downtown and hopefully drive a more vibrant, more lively downtown area and help support those businesses that we have today and encourage additional businesses that people would enjoy and be able to, you know, have come in and give them a better chance to succeed. We also thought that it made a lot of sense. We've got Wakefield Junction, but there is a good bus route along Main Street, so we wanted to center it not around the Wakefield Junction, around the commuter rail station, but around our business district and take advantage of that, that bus stop in front of the Calerussos. Or sorry, not Calerussos, um, in front of the, the grocery store downtown, the name is escaping me off the top of my head, but we, we felt as if it made a lot of sense based on that junction to have this district centered around that. And we also thought that by increasing the flexibility of people to deliver new, different housing types, it would increase the options of people in town to have different types of housing besides just single-family houses available to them. So from the implementation perspective, so right now, you know, this has been around for a while. It's starting to have been percolating. The first time that this was discussed in a, in a formal townwide setting, town administrator may have presented to town council back in April of twenty twenty-two. And then we had a number of question and answer sessions, kind of talking about the basics of this and soliciting some feedback late twenty twenty-two and early twenty twenty-three. The working group was convened after a presentation of the town council in April of twenty twenty-three. The town, the, this map that you've seen, you've seen here has been developed over the summer. We're in the process of going through these public forums and while we're writing a bylaw, the intent is that in the first half of twenty twenty-four, the first quarter of twenty twenty-four, we incorporate any revisions based on the feedback that we're getting from the public, as well as feedback that we're getting from all the different town groups that we're presenting internally between town council, CBA, environmental sustainability committee, and there's a couple others that are, that have expressed interest since, since this has come out. We incorporate those revisions, and the intent right now is for this to go to town meeting in twenty twenty-four, the spring town meeting. If we aren't in compliance by the end of twenty twenty-four, that's when the non-compliance and some of those financial penalties that I identified earlier in the presentation start to occur. So we have a backup town meeting if anything were to happen, springtime meeting for fall. If we need to make any adjustments based on the feedback from the town meeting voters. Just a simple, uh, one note that this will be a simple majority vote instead of two-thirds based on a change in the law that was passed a couple of years back, changing the threshold for housing-related zoning bylaw amendments. So in summary, town leadership ha, you know, has expressed the intent to comply with the section three A law because of the financial repercussions as well as those undefined impacts from the Attorney General. A multifamily district, some kind, will be presented to the town to give the townspeople the ability to vote on a district that would ensure compliance. So the, the district that we're looking at today, this is in full compliance with the, with the state zoning law. The proposed district maintains Wakefield's eligibility for state grants and provides a competitive advantage against other communities that aren't in compliance. It provides an opportunity for Wakefield to help, you know, address our local and obviously our regional housing needs. Provides increased housing options for Wakefield residents. It centers the growth that's going to, that would be, occur on the town, on our downtown business area. Therefore, increasing the foot traffic and helping to support our local businesses and hopefully increasing the vibrancy of our downtown area. So with that, you know, if anyone's interested to have more info, there is a webpage on the Plane Board's website. We have all this information, including this presentation up there, and all the presentations and meetings associated with this have been recorded. If you're interested in looking at anything backwards looking. And with that, I'd love to open up to questions and answers, you know, specifically some of the things that we're looking for feedback on. You know, if people have any specific feedback as it relates to the map that we've developed, things that you would like to see added, removed, changed. Also, one of the things that we've gotten some feedback from town, some, uh, some town departments is right now, what we, as a working group did is we copied and pasted the parking ratios from our existing zoning of one and a half parking spaces per unit. We've heard from some groups in town that that may be too high because it would encourage more cars to be, uh, come into town, which could then therefore impact the amount of cars that are stored in town is impacts the amount of cars that could be on the road at any one time. So we've heard some feedback that we might want to lower that down to either one or some other, so I'm interested in hearing your feedback from folks within town. So with that being said, what I ask is for anyone who's interested in providing any feedback to raise your hand. As a reminder to Theo's point, if you have the ability, please turn your camera on before you start ta, uh, speaking, and then state your name and your address, and then feel free to provide feedback. If you provide feedback once, then we'll, we're intending to go through everyone, give everyone a chance to talk, and then if anyone wants to come up for a second round of talking, we'll follow back up after the first round. Everyone has the opportunity to get feedback at the first time. So with all that being said, uh, Patr- I see Patricia Symbol, Symboli?
Yes, Patricia Symboli, yes.
So feel free, uh, love to hear your thoughts on the presentation or anything that you think that you'd want to comment on.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, my name is Patricia Symboli. I am not a resident. I am a property owner in the downtown, uh, um, on Main Street and on Princess Street. And I heard for the first time, because I am not familiar with this process and have not participated in the past, a few things that are not clear to me. The first thing that I heard is that you're trying to generate and improve foot traffic in the downtown area. And that is how you came up with some of the maps about where this, um, activity would take place. The second thing I heard, however, is that you are going to only allow three units. Three units or it's a minimum of three units in the downtown. So for example, if somebody wanted to do a mixed use with commercial on the ground level to maintain the. The streetscape and the shopping, you could only do three units above it.
So that's a great question.
And then just the the third question, I'll just get them all out at once. Um, if you're going to require one and a half cars per unit. In this downtown area, I mean. Uh, that's an impossible requirement to meet right now, since there is no basically. Um, commercial parking garage or parking lot or centralized parking. Available in the downtown. And so if you want to keep the retail. And or office and add residential, something there has to give there, you know. I don't I don't know if it's a shared parking analysis or remote lots or. Uh, but but something there isn't gonna work for from a development perspective.
Yep, so that great set of questions and and I'll I can take a couple of them and and answer them to clarify. So. This zoning would. This is going to be one of a number of compliance pathways that a developer could come in and develop new housing. So for example, if you look at like the Tono building, that's a mixed use. That is significantly higher than the. Mid the the maximum allowable as of right that would be in town this zoning. So if someone wanted to come in and build another tunnel, they would have to use an alternate zoning com- compliance pathway and obtain a special permit. This what this zoning would allow is they would allow up to four units of housing as of right. So someone could come in and they could build a t- you know, a two, a three or four unit as of right. There's no requirement as it relates to having retail on it. And that's why we we did is we explicitly excluded any lot that fronts North Albion and Main Street. So that means that those corridors that have business use right now, we want to encourage further business use. If you as someone wanted to come in and develop those areas, this would not be applicable for us as as a zoning pathway to them. They would have to use one of the other existing zoning pathways and obtain a special permit in order to to develop that. Um, and then as it relates to your parking parking feedback, that's great feedback and thank you for that. We'll definitely take that under consideration.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the clarification.
Absolutely. Uh, so the next person I see is uh Brendan LaRoche, I believe. Uh, so please turn on your uh camera and go for it.
Hello, uh Brendan LaRoche, Delano Lane. So um after we had met last time, I spent a little bit of time researching, reading some articles and. You you know, I must say I'm I'm a little disappointed in like seeing the district of this size. Um. You you know, so you had mentioned Brookline. Brookline in particular gave feedback about concerns with this. And because of that, the state had adjusted allowing for mixed use back in August. So they had specified that. First floor commercial with second, third floor residential would make more sense. I I think having everything around Church Street and everything like my concern would be changing the sightlines of the lake. And I think if we really truly want to try to fix the downtown and have the development there. Like we should be focusing on the first floor commercial, second and third stories residential. And then my other concern too is zoning more of these multifamily housing. We're gonna decrease the single family stock in the community. And with the law of supply and demand, that's simply gonna increase the cost and price for families that want to buy single homes. Because we'll have less than available for Wakefield as these are converted. So it will increase the property. Much much further, people are still gonna want to buy single family homes. It's just now that there's gonna be an extra. Because he went over, I think, what, a few hundred, three hundred or so? I forgot the exact numbers on the previous slide. But you went over the requirements for the state, so I I don't think it makes sense to do anymore. I think we should take credit for the buildings that we have. I think we should be focusing on first floor commercial where we can. And just doing smart development in that sense as opposed to going over the minimums. And expanding it into all parts of the town like this proposed was. So that that's my feedback. Thank you.
Yeah, and and I I you know, well, you did say one thing that I do want to uh. Address, because we've heard heard consistently from folks is talking about taking advantage of or getting credit for. The developments that have already occurred. And I think a lot of people think of uh the buildings on Foundry Street. So one of the things that. I do want to clarify the way that the law works is. The building on Foundry Street, that only counts as one lot. So if you try to include that square footage in this zoning district. You only get credit for four built for units, even though that lot's very large. It decreases your. Minimum density or your your density of your proposed district. And we found that when we did that, that really impacted the ability of us to be in compliance with the state law. I hear what you're saying as it relates to the first floor ground plane. That was a conscious decision that we stayed away from because, one, we'd already come up with a compliance pathway where we could create. Additional uh uh district that would allow for. Housing up to four units as of right off of the commercial corridors. And that will allow us that if someone wanted to develop one of those buildings with the first floor retail. They would have to do it under our existing zoning, which requires it to be a special permit, which gives the town a greater level of control. Of those developments. So that was the thought process. Um. You know, if if people feel feel as if that's. Um, that wasn't the appropriate manner, we can make an adjustment, but that was at least the thought process because we didn't think that having first floor retail on. Avon or Lafayette would necessarily be uh appropriate, but.
And Jim, do you mind if I chime in as well? I just wanted to um allude to that whole mixed use um component as well as Jim said. Back in August is when they ruled out these new guidelines for the mixed use based on a lot of pushback from planners. In many communities, I was part of many discussions about this. And I think, you know, the town of Wakefield has done a great job with our one ninety thirty two, which is our mixed use multifamily. And a component of that is the eighteen percent affordability that goes with any units over four in town. And so I think we thought with the affordability component of having that eighteen percent, we still wanted to hold on to that. Um, under this current um law, it's only up till ten up to ten percent. And if you go over that for the affordability, then you have to do an economic feasibility study and it hasn't been a really clear pathway of what that would look like. Um, so we thought thought the better tool and also being able to have, going back to Patricia's comment about on this main street. Not control is not the right word, but being able to have that process where it still is going through the zoning board of appeals, where we're looking at a lot more things. Um, where it's not by right was the better fit for the town of Wakefield. And then also with Foundry Street, there's also other requirements that play into this. I've been kind of doing the backend when it comes to the mapping. Um, there's a lot of different layers that go into this and uh Foundry Street. About almost half of those parcels do not count that we can count some of those parcels towards this, and this is more higher level due to. Um, some water protection as well. And so there's a lot of factors that play into some of our thought process here and would be more than happy to talk to you offline about that as well. But I just wanted to uh kind of chime in on that too.
Yeah, thank you. Like I said, I I just feel like it's too large of a district. I think if we kept it closer to the downtown, um. Uh, again, my big concern is the more, the less single family we have, it is going to increase property values. For a single family. I mean, it's just basic supply and demand. So the less of those we have, the more valuable they're gonna be, and it's gonna increase taxes for those single family homeowners as well. It's just it's the law of supply and demand.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Um, anything else before we move on to the next uh person? Okay, uh in that case, uh I see Bronwyn uh Delevolpe.
Uh, hi, good evening. Brown and Delevolpe eight Cyrus Street. Um, how many um homeless people are there in Wakefield? Do we have that number?
Sorry, did you say homeless people?
Yes.
I'm not sure. Brahman, can you explain why the question behind that or why you're looking for that data? Because I I know we don't have readily have that available. We could get that for you, but.
You you don't have that available. Okay. Um, do we know how many homeless people there are in Massachusetts?
Not right now during this process, no.
Okay, the reason why I'm asking is because um I really object to. Uh, any community being held hostage by a new a new uh uh. By new legislation, and I think that's exactly what's happening here, uh very similar to the forty B law, um as we've all learned, it's a. May have had good intentions. Um, it is extremely poorly written. Um, law, and I think that over the last many years, we've learned of the. Uh, negative ramifications um that can happen with forty B. We see it everywhere. Um, and there's no denying that. And so therefore, you know, it does sound to me as if um leadership is not hearing citizenry. Um, uh voices on this, on overdevelopment, and that we've learned really no- nothing. Um, about uh from the overdevelopment and the urbanization of Wakefield over the last um fifteen years. Now, um. Someone said that the town leadership intends to comply. Uh, who is that specifically and when was that decided?
We've gotten feedback from the members of the town council as well as uh town administrator mayor that. The intent is that we're gonna put a compliant district to the town. For a town meeting and allow the citizens the ability to decide based on the fact that if we don't. And we elect to not comply, we're gonna incur significant financial penalties from the state as well as undefined. Penalties above and beyond what's already been defined that may or may not include. Up to having multifamily allowed as of right across the entirety of the district, because they would argue that our zoning is no longer in compliance with state law.
I understand that, but I'm and that's exactly what I'm referring to, that um. I just personally don't agree with the communities being held hostage with um uh punitive. Measures if they if they don't comply um with this. Now, um. Okay, has the development in the last fifteen years increased the health of the business in the downtown? Anyone?
I can speak to that, Brahman, because I do talk to the businesses in downtown. I spoke to a local business and I won't say their name right now. Um, that has expressed that they have seen their business um improve since some of these new developments have come in. Um, I think I a few others have mentioned too that some of these developments that they're seeing. Have um been able to see more foot traffic. I have personally seen it myself, see people come out of these developments, walk downtown. Um, so I hope that answers your question.
Well, sort of, thank you. Um, I also think that the the parking again is an issue and I I I hope. That town leadership um thinks back to the history of these problems. That when we uh, you know, truncate parking, where the car is gonna go, just because. Um, even mixed use buildings, whatnot, people are not gonna give up their cars. They may walk downtown, that's one thing, but they're still gonna have cars uh to. They're still gonna have cars. So I'm asking you, what kind of impact and impact studies have been done regarding the increased uh parking demand? Um, the demand on our schools and uh as well as things like um. Congestion on the roads, light pollution, uh vehicular vehicle pollution. Um, where are those impact studies?
So to be clear, there have not been any specific studies related to this zoning effort. The and the basis of that, you're talking about projects. That unless you're doing a. Master plan, which is something that has occurred on a separate track. One project going from one to two or three or four units. That incremental number of units on a project by project basis is. Not going to move the needle in a substantial way for. Schools and some of those other services you mentioned. With that being said. It is something that has been expressed, people have expressed interest in the town of. Looking at some of those topics on a wider lens, townwide. And I think that's something that I'll I'll defer to Aaron, but I know that's something that we've talked about as it relates to trying to do an overall comprehensive study. To try to tie in everything, because that's something that we've been hearing consistent feedback as it relates to doing one-off studies related to. One development, even if a development at size doesn't necessarily take everything into account. But that is not something that we have been tasked with in order to try to incorporate into this zoning effort.
Uh, I thank you. I understand that, but what I'm saying, but I think that it it would behoove the town before. Uh, we we get to vote on this to understand the negative implications of this. And and one more thing, the reason I asked about how many homeless people there are, it says that we're down two hundred thousand. Uh, housing units in Massachusetts. Well, where are all those people living now? I mean, I I where are all those people? Are they homeless? Do they not have homes? This is what I I don't know.
They're living in other cities.
I'm sorry?
They're living in other cities. They moved. That migration is negative.
Can I talk to this, please? Um, so I I know Jim kind of pushed this question to me. I want to talk one about. You brought up schools. There have been studies and we have a slide on this and Jim, I don't know if you want to pull it up. Back in two thousand fifteen, when we passed our mixed use multifamily district, and I hear everything you're saying. Um, we have actually seen a decrease um in the Wakefield Public School enrollment. This is data driven things. Um, we've also between that time between two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. That is when a number of these residential units were built as well as recently, and. We just got the the numbers again for this year for our twenty twenty two enrollment numbers. And they are also um around trending down from what they were in back two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen. Um, when it comes to the cars, there's also been previous studies that have shown that single family homes um have more cars than than the units that are are being stated here, these. Up to four units. Um, we do hear you loud and clear, and that's why we're having these public sessions when it comes to parking concerns. And the feedback you're providing now is helpful because I think it's something that. We've been really struggling with as a working committee group on on what the parking looks like. Um, again, let's go back to why this was created. Uh, I think we can all agree that our MBTA lines could be um improved. But people are using the MBTA line. A lot of people I I can. Uh, attest to a few people that have one car between a family or that are sharing a unit, so that's not something that is unheard of. Um, when it comes to traffic, it was brought up at the last meeting as well, that a traffic wide study um should be done. And I connected that gentleman with our traffic advisory committee, and that's something that's been discussed as well. Um, you know, I think there was one more thing when you said with the homelessness, um, a lot of people are leaving. The state of Massachusetts. It's been proven that many companies are choosing not to locate here. Amazon, I believe, was one of them due to the housing costs and people not being able to find housing to support their their uh workers. And so uh just because we have a two hundred thousand uh housing shortage. You know, that plays into these people that want to locate here that cannot find homes. So I hope that answers a number of your questions. Again, a lot of these things, um, you know, no studies have been and done yet. Um, but you know, as of right now, people can go get a special permit and change their three to four fan to three to four if they want to with a special permit where a traffic study is not done. So I just want to make sure everyone on the call knows that as well.
Thank you. I have other questions, but I see so many hands up that I'll uh uh defer to them. Thank you.
And Jim and Erin, if I could add, um, this is Bill Spalding of the Planning Board. From the U S Data Collected Department of Housing and Urban from twenty twenty two. Uh, Massachusetts had um fifteen thousand five hundred and seven people experience homelessness. And ma- uh Wakefield had six hundred and fifty seven people, including two hundred and sixty four children. So that is data that is readily available online if you need to look up further information.
Okay, uh, so thank you for that, and I'll just try to try to be respectful of everyone else's time. Uh, I see Don Millward is uh has raised their hand.
My name is Don Millward. I live over uh eighteen Emerald Street. Um, I I'm here tonight just basically to make a a couple statements. I really don't have any questions. Um, you know, I don't know all of the ins and the outs of the zoning and the the town laws uh uh in that such. However. Erin just said she hears loud and clear, she hears loud and clear. However, I don't think the working group hears the Wakefield. People loud and clear. If you go on any social media. We are done with the big buildings. We're done with the traffic. I don't know if you guys drive your kids to school in the morning. It's a nightmare. The traffic in Wakefield is at an all time high. It takes more than a half hour some days to get from the high school to the galvin and over the train tracks. Where you guys want to build more houses.
I'm sorry, um, I'm sorry, Ms. Millward. Um.
Yeah.
Um, Theo, and as a chair, I'd like to just jump in and say we have a lot of people to look at tonight. This isn't about building big, big buildings. The presentation is about three and four families within this radius. It's not about building.
You're still building.
Stay on topic. Because of traffic, I have children that go to school as well um at the Galvin at the high school. So I I can we keep this on topic, please?
Um, thank you, Bill, but I am on topic. I'm talking about what's being done in Wakefield. So thank you for interrupting. That was not very kind. You guys, but the law is requiring one thousand six hundred ninety-six. We are currently at one thousand six hundred you want. We only are required to meet the what is it? The minimum fifty-five more units. That's it. We only need to make sure we get all the money and the grants and the funding, fifty-five units.
So that's not, that's not technically correct based on the way the law is written.
In your per um your slides.
So the existing units in the district that we are proposing are the sixteen forty-one. Based on the district that in blue that is written, or sorry. Based on the district that you see right here, we have sixteen forty-one units that are built. If you reduce the district down in size, obviously, the number of units that are built would go down. So you'd have to increase the density allowable in order to hit the minimum. If there is, we've developed a map based on the absolute minimum where you could increase the size of the district by the multi-playground and lose the two districts on the eastern half or you know east of Main Street. And that would get you down. This existing district, I believe, has approximately thirteen hundred u- units built as of today. And this existing, this proposed alternate minimum district, I think gets you like to be like seventeen. Can't remember off the top of my head. I think it's like seventeen. Erin, do you remember off the top of your head?
Uh seventeen thirty-five.
Seventeen thirty-five. But so to be clear, the sixteen forty-one number that you're referring to is the existing number of units that are built in those areas that are shaded in blue. And in this district. So you, so if you, it's not as simple as saying sixteen forty-one, sixteen seventy. You know, you have to have meet the minimum densities and it has to be as of right in the district that you're specifically talking about. And again, it has to be three units minimum for the state. But in order to meet the minimum densities that we're talking about, we had to get up to four units to hit that fifteen units per acre.
Okay, just so I stay on topic for Bill, though, I think the townspeople don't want to see us go over the minimum. I think doing what is asked by the state is fine and dandy, and I don't think the townspeople want more than what is needed. Is that on topic?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, um I see Becky Wilson has uh her hand raised.
Hi, yes, uh my name is Becky Wilson. I live at um thirty-two Yale Avenue. So I'm right in the heart of the propos- proposed new zone. Um. And we've certainly enjoyed this location because of its proximity to the commuter rail and to downtown and the lake. Um, but we've also really loved this street and the neighborhood because of its historic nature. Uh, which I think gives it its character. Um, your presentation shows that the size of the new zone is three percent of Wakefield's acreage. Um, but I believe that a third of the registered historic properties and districts in Wakefield fall within that um three percent. So as you look at how uh Wakefield meets the state requirement, um I do hope you'll keep with what you're calling the gentle development constraints you presented so far, um with no more than the three stories and four units. Um, so that we can hope to keep the feel of the neighborhood. I know that you had mentioned in an earlier presentation that, you know, a much smaller zone would mean that we'd have to have larger buildings with more units and I think that would be really hard on on this neighborhood. Um. And you asked for feedback about the cars. I do just want to mention um that traffic in this area has already come up. It can be really tough and on Yale Ave, we tend to have bottlenecks at both ends. Um, with uh the funeral home and the post office and restaurants at one end and then North Ave often backed up um beyond DL Ave. So um whatever that means in terms of how you set your car limit, um just hope you'll keep that in mind. Um, so I know I can understand, having listened to a couple of the presentations, what a complex puzzle this is. Um, so I appreciate your considering uh this feedback.
Thank you very much. Uh, I think the next person I've got is uh Chris.
Uh, hey, how's it going? Uh, sorry, can't turn my camera on. Um, I said a question about the sixteen.
Uh, before you go, before you start, can you please state your name and your address?
Oh, hi, yes, sir. My name is Akris Zach, fifty Emerson Street. Um, I saw a question about the sixteen point three units um per acre. So you said by right would be four units, but if you had, if you had one full acre, for instance, and you wanted to put sixteen units, you could only put four?
So the the way the law is written, you have to take the existing lots that exist today. And you can only get count, you can only count four units per lot. So if you had a sixteen-acre lot, you can only put four units as of right. Now, with that, if you had a a full acre, what you could do is you could subdivide it with a uh you could subdivide it and then into multiple lots and then put four units on each of those lots as long as they met a certain certain set of criteria as it relates to access and frontage and access and frontage.
Hmm. Gotcha. Okay, and then I guess the follow-up question would be like, if you wanted to go get um a special permit for that um without subdividing, would that just be like, is that feasible or is that?
Uh, yeah, so so it really depends. And if you bear with me for a second, I'll go back to this this the the district where we show the overlay. So basically, we have a number of districts in town as it relates to our business district that allows certain uses as of right. It also allows a lot more uses that are required with a special permit that would allow build, you know, building up higher. And then we also have a mixed-use zoning overlay district that Erin referenced earlier where it's an alternative compliance pathway. So if you had a one-acre lot and you're interested in building something bigger or more, you know, having more units than the the four that we're talking about. My guess is that you'd see people use those alternative existing zoning pathways uh to build something like a tonneau, for example.
Hmm, gotcha. All right, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, uh bef- before we jump, Chris, I didn't get your last name, so just.
Uh Dedek.
All right, D E D D. I see. Thanks.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Chris. Uh, and the next person I have is uh Jim Sullivan.
Yeah, how you doing? It's Jim Sullivan, six Harwick Road. Um, so my first question for the working group is why is, why are you proposing it larger than what is required by the uh by the statute of of the law?
So the the reason why we're proposing something that's larger than the bare, the absolute bare minimum is candidly, we thought that the district that we are proposing centers the, you know, if we're gonna have any additional housing u- units be developed within Wakefield, we feel as if that this area is where we want to focus it. We also felt as if four units as of right is not materially different from the neighborhood character's perspective than what already exists. Given the fact that, you know, there are multiple buildings that already exist in this area. Additionally, we felt as if that if we've got, we've got the commuter rail station on the uh along North Ave. We got the bus line around along Main Street. We felt as if if we're gonna be going through the effort of doing a rezoning, we might as well do something that we think makes sense. You know, if we're if we're thinking about where in town, if we have additional housing units be delivered, where we want them to be. You know, taking taking the whole idea of this is required from the state out of it, where would we want it to be? And we thought that the zoning district that we identified would make a lot of sense. We also felt as if that by creating it where it's four units as of right, it makes it so it's not materially different than the existing housing stock. It allows it so you could, you know, hopefully have a couple units be delivered, you know, a conversion here, a conversion there, and it's not going to be some massive new thing that's gonna be a result of this zoning. And so those are some of the the reasons that we thought, you know, i- it it's one of those things where we thought is if if we're going through this effort of doing the rezone, we might as well do something that makes sense and helps us deliver a little bit additional housing stock for the town because there's a great need for it.
All right, um. So the the parking, uh you haven't written the bylaw yet. Uh it would there be a a requirement for off-street parking?
So the off-street parking right now, we are posing at to match the existing off-street parking requirements in the wi- in the town. So in town today, across all zoning, you need one and a half parking spaces per unit. You need two if it's up to three, three bedrooms or more. We thought for this would be matched that one and a half units of parking per one and a half units of the parking per unit. And so we're getting, we're looking to get feedback if people think that it makes sense to do that or if it makes sense to potentially lower it on the thought that you would have less cars because you'd have less, you know. If you deliver less parking spaces, the people who buy the house know they have one less parking space. Theoretically, that drives down the number of cars and makes it so they would be more inclined to use transit and have less traffic impacts. That being the thought process.
All right, so on a four-unit uh building uh proposed, they could have six cars, uh you need six, you need room for six off-street parking. Is that, is that how I understood it?
That is correct.
All right, i- i- is there a a maximum lot coverage for the building, uh a proposed building?
So we're currently working on that right now in terms of the maximum lot. The the thought process right now is basically to take all of the those dimensional, like the really nitty-gritty ones, the the lock covers, the setbacks, all those types of things. Take the existing mixed-use overlay that we have and take all those, all those, you know, I think it's thirty percent uh minimum open space, thirty-five percent lock coverage in terms of the building, I forgot off the top of my head. Take all those and do a copy paste. And so the thought process that you take the existing zoning that's on the books, you take all, you know, those setbacks and such and you match them with this zoning.
All right, so I I don't know, you know, some of the lot sizes, but it seems like a a bit of a difficult math to work out needing six parking spaces. Uh, maximum height of thirty-five feet. I don't know. I don't know how big these units could become uh, you know, to comply, right?
And Jim, candidly, that's something that we're actively looking at with uh the town engineer to make sure that we're not creating a zoning that isn't feasible. Uh, and so we're working on that right now. Uh, so and I think that that's something that we're trying to be cognizant of as we as we get farther along this. You know, I I know that the minimum lot size we've identified as part of this is four thousand square feet. The the question would be, do you do, is four thousand square feet too small to accommodate all the other requirements as it relates to the minimum open space and the ma- the parking spaces?
Yep, and I understand the state, there's no uh low-income component, correct?
So the way that the state writ- wrote the law is that you have a maximum, you can only force people to have a maximum of ten percent affordability, but practically what that means for us is that if you have four units as of right and you make one of them be affordable, you go up to twenty-five percent. Erin mentioned the state's gonna make you do some sort of uh feasible economic feasibility study, which is not a hundred percent clear how that would actually work and or if the feasibility study would indicate that you could actually do it. So instead of spending the town's time and money on something that we think is probably not likely to yield any success with the state, we elected to omit the affordability because we didn't think that that was viable unless you had, you know, a nine, ten, eleven you know, building as of right, which we thought was just wildly inappropriate based on the neighborhood character and the fact that we have a special permit process for buildings of that scale.
All right, so a couple more questions. I read in the paper that it it adversely impacts the total count for the number of units against the forty-B ten percent threshold. I- i- is that correct? So if you have uh, you know, uh additional units uh that'll increase the number of units, which would allow requiring more uh units to meet the ten percent across the town, is that right?
Uh, I'll defer to Aaron on that, but that's my basic understanding.
So basically, as you know, you're seeing the sixteen sixteen ninety-six number that the tat- the state is saying that we have to um, you know, the capacity that we need to allow to build. Um, that doesn't mean that we're going to reach that sixteen ninety-six, so it will add more total housing units. Um, will it reach that sixteen ninety-six? I doubt it. Um, you would have to completely redo this whole area. Um, but you know, it would be include, it would, I guess the short answer is it would increase our total housing units, a huge amount, that sixteen ninety-six. Uh, I doubt it, but I don't want people, you know, hold that against me.
No, understood. So if it's half, it's half, and that's gonna increase the the numerator or the denominator or the percentage for your uh forty-B ten percent, so.
Um, so uh just, Jim, uh this is uh Theo Noll from the planning board. Just to that point, um, it's not that uh the denominator's increasing tomorrow either.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I mean, there there's ebb and flow and there's time uh that's that's on on our side.
And they base it on our our census figures, which is every ten years. So you wouldn't see that total housing unit number increase until the new new housing count.
Yeah, and and the other thing that's on our side is um Erin and Wakefield have, and the town's been really thoughtful with our uh our previous inclusionary zoning.
Right, and that's unfortunate. I I asked about that, not to you folks, but the current inclusionary zone or the special permit, y- you can't get any credit for what's already sort of been done in Wakefield, which is very unfortunate.
Uh, but we're but we're getting credit on our for for existing on our forty-B, which is now close to nine percent, so.
Yeah, no, no.
We're we're doing, we're doing good.
Right, and then um just a couple more questions and comments. So I just, I guess envision this as uh a- across many communities. Uh, I grew up in Malden. I I just see more and more three and four-family units going up. Uh, if I'm a developer and I can buy the house at a certain price, create four units, sell them off as condos. Uh, I mean, let's face it, this is going on, you know, all over the the state in certain uh market areas. Uh, I I'm not sure you're gonna find it more affordable. I mean, I I see condos going for sale uh in the newspaper for five and six hundred thousand dollars when uh I bought my home many, many years ago at a much lower price than that. Uh, I just think the uh, the im- I I see the 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 map, I I I would say I completely disagree with making it any bigger than the requirement is. I think the uh the map in and of itself is gonna create a a mini South Boston to me. Uh, now granted, you know, the house has to change hands or somebody has to develop that house, but it's gonna happen over time and in a community like Wakefield is a pretty desirable place to be. You know, we we may uh talk about this and talk about that and need more of this and towns, town leadership needs to do more, but it it's not a bad place to be. And I just think this uh this area is gonna get dense. You're gonna have multifamily housing and you're gonna bring, you know, more people to the to the town, which which might be okay, but i- it's just gonna get congested. It's not a huge area, I agree, but you know, I I I envision Southie, I go, I get to South Boston, one of my kids is there and I mean, talk about congested. Uh, that's the last thing you really want to see here in Wakefield. At least that's the last thing I want to see in Wakefield. Uh, and again, you build four condos, th- they're not gonna be uh amazingly affordable, particularly uh given the cost of materials and how to build things today. It's not to say it won't come down. But, and I have one more comment. I don't know if you have any comment on that statement that I made.
No, I I think I think uh one more comment and then I'd like to just move to the next, the next people that keep to be respectful of their time as well.
Yep. So uh I I equate this to to sort of finance. I I view this as an unfunded mandate from the state that we deal with on the Finance Committee regularly, where we have these unfunded mandates from the state. Uh, the state leadership, uh they're completely missing the boat on this, uh the earlier uh comment about the forty-B process and and it not working as intended. I'm very concerned about this. I I I do view this as well as the uh the state uh, you know, flexing their muscles with a little legalized extortion to the people that are along the MBTA because we get, we have the MBTA, we have that value. So for that, we we're getting uh forced into doing something. Very unfortunate, and I think the the maximum should be the minimum that's required. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for uh for the feedback and the questions. Uh, I see a Joe uh Tavano.
Yes, how you doing? Uh, Joe Tavano, twenty-three Eden Street. Um, I'm kinda gonna give you two perspectives. Um, I'm a longtime Wakefield resident. I actually live on Eden Street, which is in this district. A house I built, uh a legal two-family, but now that it can be a legal four, I'd probably change it to a legal four. And when I, when when I look at this district, there's a lot of rental properties in this district. I think what what's gonna happen if this goes through is a lot of these a lot of these properties are gonna be changed to four. A lot of these properties are gonna be changed to four families, and they're not gonna become, you mentioned by. You know, yeah, some will be changed to condos, but a lot of people are just gonna add additional units. We already have a lot of. Additional illegal units in this neighborhood, that's just gonna make them legal. Um, the parking's a mess in the area now. Uh, one point five per unit isn't even adhered to now. Uh, since the parking being went away. You know, which which I think was terrible. You have a lot of on-street parking, a lot of congestion. What I think's gonna happen in these neighborhoods also is it's, um, a lot of historically significant homes, not historical, but historically significant. A lot of them will probably get bulldozed or or come up because now. Um, people, and I've done it myself, you you seek out general residence lots where you could legally build a two-family. Now you just, now you just gave them the the right to put a four-family there, so people are gonna seek out these neighborhoods. Seek out these properties. Um, either turn them into four families and rent them out, or either. Or or either bulldoze them and build four families and maybe go to condos. Um, that was just one statement I wanted to make on that. I don't know if. You wanna comment on that, but then I have a couple other things I'd like to just mention.
No, I think I, I don't necessarily hear a question in there, so keep going.
Okay, so how much money are we talking about? The MBTA, I know you said three point six billion over three years, that's only one point two million. And then, and then there was some additional funds, are we talking? Potentially losing two million a year, or is 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 there a number there?
Aaron, can I, can I?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can talk to that, so that three point six million is, um. Two grants, and there's been a, well, more than two grants that we've received, um, in the last. Three years, uh, to do, one was a water main in- infrastructure improvement, and the other one was funds to, um, fund our master plan. But also, I think moving forward, the fourteen different grants that they highlight, uh, that we will not really be eligible for anymore. Are such things as Mass Works, where we could do infrastructure improvements, whether that be funds for for paving, uh, water main. And this isn't just for new development, that would be within the district, this is throughout the whole town, um. As well as planning grants, um, there's underutilized properties program which we've looked into, um, to redo some of, uh. The the buildings in downtown to make them, um, handicap accessible and things like that. So I don't have a number on it, but, uh, many of these grants are used to, um. Advance the town, not only for new development, but ongoing things as well.
You say, I'm just, just trying to put in the, would you say four million a year, five million a year?
No, I, no, no.
Well, cause, cause I mean, a million dollars.
I mean, I don't know, I guess I should, I should say, it could be, you know, one year we could get a grant. If we'd be so lucky to get four million dollars a year for infrastructure improvements. There could be a year that we do that, and then the next year we get fifty, so.
Yeah, and and Aaron, forgive me if I, if I'm incorrect, but I think the best way to describe it is. There's, it's not like a consistent number, it's kind of, I'll call it lumpy. Based on, uh, if you get, you could get one grant that could be. A million bucks and then next year not get anything. You you were some of these grants, but, you know, as I mentioned. There were three programs that were identified, that we got the three point six over the last three years when the law was first announced. And then they added fourteen more when they had a couple communities that didn't comply, so. I can't tell you that this is gonna be the the end, the end list, you know what I mean? It's it may expand.
It it just doesn't seem like a hell of a lot of money to be held, held hostage for, um. I have another question concerning the district. When I first heard about this. I envisioned it would be, you know, along, along maybe North Ave. Along Main Street, maybe along Albion Street, but to, if you could go back to that previous screen, that's. Actually, the screen where you show the dotted line where the district is. Um, yeah, right there, perfect. I mean, this is a. An old established two-family neighborhood, like the person on ELF. Av- Av said, I mean, granted, there are a lot of two, three, there's even some four-family homes there. But but they've, 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 they've been there, and when I look at this district, I just kinda look. And and, and you know, because I've done a little developing in town also besides living here. And I look for where the opportunities are, and and there's a lot of other people with a lot more. Resources than me who think the same way, and you're gonna find people looking at this saying, hey. I can buy this now, I'm gonna turn this into a four-family, I'm gonna do this, and I think it's just gonna. It's it's it's, it's, it's actually gonna decrease, increase the rental, decrease the ownership. And there'll actually be less, less sa- single families, and. People looking to move to Wakefield, not that this isn't, I love this area, but this isn't the desirable area where the families wanna move to. Alright, they want a little more land, a little more space, a little less congestion, can, a little less, um. I could pronounce it con- congestion, so what's gonna happen? Is I I I can just see a, a lot of the rent, a a lot more rentals and a lot more on-street parking.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I wanna keep this moving along to be respectful of everyone else who's who's waiting patiently. Thank you, Joe. I see the next person is, uh, Dave, I think, Bonner?
Yep, hi, uh, Dave Bonner, Tencomlin Road. Um, uh, the question I had was just really briefly about the parking number. Is that, uh, mandated minimum, maximum, or like a fixed number per unit?
It would be a minimum.
Okay, cool. Um, just wanted to thank you for the presentation, uh, I really appreciated the photos of the existing units that were already there. Um, I'm kind of appalled by the fact that everyone seems to be acting as though people are rushing in to. Steal our town when we're looking to add. Availability even, not mandates, but availability for. Another handful of units in the downtown. Uh, I just doesn't make any sense to me at all that people are reacting as though there's an invasion going on. Um, I was honestly expecting to come in and see proposals for. Four or five-story buildings, you know. Having not run the numbers myself, I didn't know what to expect, so I was expecting to see. Complying with the law require much, uh, bigger builds by right. Um, and I was really happily surprised while you were giving the presentation to see. It's still gonna be three-story buildings. You're only gonna have four units by right, anything bigger than that, you're still gonna have to talk to the town about it. Um, and I guess I'm just genuinely puzzled why such a nothing burger. Is something that people are seemingly really objecting to. That's all, thank you.
I I keep hearing that people wanna do the minimum. And if people really want to do that, we could, we could bring this district way down. What we would have to do is increase the unit count. You know, what we just heard, we're trying to avoid doing that and changing the town too, too drastic. So we kind of made a decision to. Spread the district out a little bit more and keep the number of units down, so. If people really want us to work to increase the unit count and make the, with this big small, we can try to do that. Um, and that's what it, it almost sounds like people want, they want as smaller district as possible, but if you want a small district. You're gonna have some big building. So I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah, and I think Matt, that's a good point, before I move to the next commenter, I'll just, for just anyone who, um. Interested, you know, one of the things we did look at is we looked at Greenwood, because we thought that that made a lot of sense. We looked at this district you can see in green. We found that if you looked at and you reran the numbers, you only got eleven point eight units per acre. In order to do something like this, if we wanna get a smaller area, you know, acreage-wise. You end up with, need to have six units as of right, which we just felt was more than we were talking about from from a. Neighborhood perspective, and we probably would've had to go to, you know, four or five uni- five stories as of right. We we just thought that that was too much. So that's why we end up with with where we, what we did do, and we tried to spread it out, and, you know, we. That's, that was the thought process. So, uh, Matt, uh, before I move on, is there anything else you wanna say, Matt?
No, and and we, again, on, being on the working committee. We had charged to make this equitable and adding Greenwood, because again, it's another station, and we thought it would be. Nice to have some housing around there too, with the, the goal is center people around stations. But, as Jim demonstrates from this, it just didn't work, so we pulled back from this. And we went to what we thought was gonna be the best. Again, uh, I understand people wanna do the minimums on it, but. Everything that is done in town, like development, everyone's trying to reach for the minimum. And it gets a little frustrating that. We are now striving. We criticize when developers commit and do as little as possible, yet. I'm hearing from the town of Wakeville that everyone wants us to do, and we wanna put forward. As small as district, we wanna reach again for the minimum. I think we, we should reach a little bit, uh, more than that, and try to help the downtown areas.
Yeah, thank you for that, Matt, um, I moved, moving along, uh, Andrew, and I apologize, I'm not even gonna try your last name.
Well, that's insulting. Hey, yeah, um, I'm Andrew Bczinsky, I live at, uh, eleven Shady Avenue, um, and, uh, you know, much like the the previous speaker, um. Dave, I, uh, I also think that this, this proposal is, you know, pretty, pretty low impact. Um, I do think that, uh, I do wish that it was a little bit more, I wish that you did have the green, uh, the Greenwood. Uh, aspect in there as well, you know, you mentioned you were worried about changing the character of the neighborhood. I think the character of these neighborhoods need to change. Uh, I've been in real estate research for the last ten years. And, uh, I, I understand the. Supply and demand aspect that's going on in Boston, um, and I apologize, it was me that, um. Uh, butted in about people leaving Boston. Boston's, uh, Boston's net negative, uh, migration is not a good sign. And, you know, the the number that we came out, that came out two hundred thousand, um, in terms of housing shortage. I I honestly, it's probably an underestimation. Uh, you know, people, I heard some, I heard a lot of supply skepticism, uh, today. Uh, which is very common amongst Americans, uh, basically, you know, if you ask an American, uh, adult, hey, if I. Add a lot of, uh, bags of chips to the supermarket, is the price gonna go up or down? They know the price is gonna go down, uh, but they don't, uh, they don't make the same connection with, uh, with housing stock. If we add any housing stock, it does, it does affect price. If you add a lot of housing stock, that's when you start to see prices decline. You don't see it in Boston as much because we are so restricted in the, in the Boston area, but if you look at a place like Nashville or Austin or Phoenix. Those are the places that actually do add housing supply, and you see their housing prices fluctuate in ways that you just don't see in Boston. Uh, and so I, again, I'm very much in favor of, uh, in favor of this, uh, you know, I I think, I'm glad that the state stepped in. Um, people talked about the state holding us hostage, we are holding property owners hostage. We are, uh, we are restricting what property owners can do with their land. Uh, so if we're talking, if we wanna talk about who's being the big bad bully here, um, I think we need to consider that Wakefield is also. Uh, putting some pretty onerous restrictions on property owners. Uh, so thanks, Phil, thanks for all your work, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Andrew, for the, uh, the feedback and, uh, for clarifying some of the the comments you made earlier. Uh, I see the, uh. Next gentleman is, uh, Mike, uh, I think it's Pearlman.
Yeah, can, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Alright, uh, I just, uh. Well, I just had a couple of, a couple of questions and and one possible request that might be helpful, um.
Real quick, Mike, where where are you calling from?
Oh, sorry, it's, uh, twenty-three King Street.
Thank you.
Uh, so, so thanks for, thanks for the presentation, uh, you know, I, I think I generally, between that, uh, especially in some of the other. Materials that I've I've seen and read in the paper, uh, I think I generally understand the, the kind of, uh. Push and pull of the, the, um, housing shortage from a state and a town level versus the. Uh, seemingly large percentage of residents who who desire to 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 limit new building and traffic and and so forth. Um, uh, so specifically to, to these items, um. I'm curious if, if you, if you have an estimate on the, the town population increase. Uh, that you might expect over time due to the three A proposed district. Um, and all of the new building in all. Different stages, uh, from proposals in the ZBAs or to, you know, up to near occupancy, there's a lot of. Different, um. You know, development that's, that's been going on that, uh, just don't get to see it as a sum total. So including that, I guess.
Yeah, uh, so. I I'll defer to Aaron related to the, the existing premise of initiative date, um, but before I do that, just. To, for this proposal we're talking about tonight. If you took every house in the, the proposed district and you wiped it down to zero. And then you all built up to the full maximum, that this is only gonna allow as of right. You're talking about a net difference of approximately seven hundred units, and so that's. The absolute maximum, which I think everyone can appreciate is highly unlikely to be. We're highly unlikely to get to that full number, but that would represent about six percent of the hous- housing stock within, in the entirety of the town. So if you're just talking on the proposal we're talking about right now, if you add a hundred percent of the new units that would be allowable by, by right. You could get up to six, six percent. With that being said. A lot of these lots are already zoned for two units. And you don't see people knocking all those houses down. It requires, I think what gentleman, the earlier gentleman said, it requires a change of how, change of ownership. Most likely in order to see going from the, any of the buildings that we have that are one up to four. Or if you have any of the buildings that have two units on them today, up to four from there, so. That would be the maximum, you know, that six percent. What would the actual number of new units be that would be delivered under this? I think it's really tough to tell, you know, I think as many people understand, there are a lot of constraints on the. Cost and interest rates on the real estate market right now, that's depressed the number of units in 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 construction. With that being said, that's not necessarily gonna be a permanent state of affairs, so that could, you know, we could go back to the way it was two, three years ago where. Con- construction was, was. More favorable, uh, conditions, but over time, I would anticipate that some of these units would, would turn. Um, but with that being said, you know, I know, Aaron, do you have a, do we have a account of the? Units that are currently in the pipeline to be delivered and in construction?
Uh, right, as of right now or over the last few years?
As of right now, the the forward-looking.
Uh, I do not have that number readily available, no. I I guess I'm misunderstanding, so like projects have been just approved by the zoning board of appeals or what the projections are moving forward?
Yeah, I guess, so my second question was really towards, towards that, uh, it it was, uh, uh. Is there or can there, could there be a listing and geographical sort of mapping of? All the sum total of of n- new unit, you know, new multi-unit developments. I I guess, I don't know what the right term is, but all stages, cause like. Approved, you know, like CCF just is approved now, right, and Tarrant Lane is approved. Uh, I don't know about like K, the KFC, the MG Fitness and things like that, some aren't approved yet, but some are. In a process that we know will eventually end up in some. You know, some building of some estimated number of units that may be a little smaller than what's just being requested, but I'm trying to, I think. What the, the residents. Don't get to see and talk about a lot because they, probably because they don't see it somewhere is, is they see a lot of building that's gone up. In the, in the last few years, they see a lot of building that's being proposed, especially the large ones, but then a whole bunch of these. Not as large, you know, here and there and all the way up and down North Ave and things like that, but, so the impacts, um. You know, it 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 doesn't seem from a resident standpoint, like we see it as a sum total of kind of what's anticipated based on what's on the, kind of on the docket.
Yeah, I mean, I could easily, uh, get you those figures, um, you know, I do have those, those numbers somewhere, um. You know, I know, uh, we, you can look up the total. Uh, number of units that have been permitted over the last few years, whether that be a one-family, a multi-family, and I do have those, those figures. Right in front of me, um, I have had to do some, um, reports lately where I have counted the number of. Units that, you know, are on the docket, and I can pull that out if you just, um, you know, stay with me for one second, but I just wanna be mindful of everyone's time. Um, but we have seen an increase of about. Um, thirteen hundred units that have come online since two thousand fifteen, that's just a number on the top of my head. Um, and so that includes, um, you know, the number of multifamilies and things like that, so, um. If that's the number that you're kind of alluding to, um, but we also, yeah.
Uh, it's part of it, but I guess, uh, you know, I live near the CCF, will be directly affected by that, uh, so that's what, seven hundred and something?
No, four hundred and twenty-four or something, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, four hundred, so, um, I think I'm adding, and then there's the Tarrant Lane, um. I don't live anywhere near there, but I know it exists, but it just comes to mind as another large. That's not built yet, right?
Yeah, I think, Mike, I think one of the things that we found, we are, we, Aaron and I looked at trying to come up with a number similar to this at one point. And the problem is that, you know, big round numbers, right? Aaron said since two thousand fifteen, approximately thirteen hundred units have been developed and, and delivered into, in town. It's about a hundred and sixty per year. But similar to the grants, right? It's, it's kind of lumpy, right? Cause if you can, if you have a CCF deliver with four hundred units, that could be theoretically three years worth of development delivered in one, one development, right? So it, it, it really, and it, it's also one of those things where even if a building is permanent, it doesn't necessarily mean it gets built. The developer still needs to actually go and do it. And so we, it's hard to tell. We're coming off of a, a, a long period of time when the development intensity was very high. And with interest rates and construction costs and all those other things, maybe we see that slow, maybe we don't. Maybe the, you know, maybe interest rates go back down to, you know, near zero. It's kind of one of those things where you kind of do the shrug emoji, cause you don't know what the, the vagaries of the market are gonna be. But, you know, so it, it, about a hundred and sixty is what we've seen in the last eight years per year. But again, it's very, it varies a lot year to year. And is that a number that you can baseline? On a go-forward basis, it's tough to tell. I don't know if that helps address what you're asking for, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think the background of it, and I don't want to take a whole lot of extra time, but the, the background of it is I keep hearing people talk about, you know, online in these forums and things of, or like a ZBA, you know, meetings for major development is we're, we're talking about the traffic impact, the school impact, the parking, or maybe it depending where it is of a given project. It's, that's like, that's great, but, you know, I, I've read in the paper, I listen to this, it's like we, there's six other projects of different sizes that I've heard about in the last year, right? That are, most of which will likely turn to something, so it's, it's kind of a little more. It, it, it's not the only, i- i- for a given project, if it's like on one side of town versus another, then the traffic isn't affected, so i- i- in, by themselves, they're important, but also as a, as a whole, to understand the picture of how much, you know, are we talking about currently that's sort of in process, which seems like a lot, I think to a lot of people, may, maybe it's averaged out, you know, like.
I'm like, I have a, the number right, and have you that had it in front of me, sorry, can't talk, of future developments, and some of them were just approved as in the last week or two, and it's around a hundred and thirty-seven. And then that thirteen hundred, the thirteen hundred I was alluding to was since two thousand fifteen, so that includes CCNF. And like Jim, you know, Jim said, some years, you know, CCNF, it was four hundred, and then these other ones are a hundred and thirty-seven. So, you know, it's, it just all depends on the year and how things move forward. And that took some time since that mixed use was approved by a town meeting in two thousand fifteen. So I think that's why it kind of took until those years. But I think what Jim said, you know, people may decide to still use that method going forward, but with this, it's, it's the smaller development, so.
All right, and now, last thing was just sort of a, a, maybe a, a proposal request. Is, is it possible? No, I know it's, would it be reasonable to, to post, unless I haven't looked and haven't seen it, some simple educational material to, you could point people to, like on the town, the town website or something to, that would kind of talk to the, like bullet points to prevent the continuous talk of the town's building this, you know, town's building X, or the town's allowing Y, or that, like the town's doing these things as opposed to like, you know, that the town and ZBA have, you know, has highly limited control to outright deny proposal to towns not building this, as a developer bought the land and, you know, they're going before the VZBA to, you know, to get permit to build it. So sort of like a, what the town and ZBA can do and what they can't do. Cause I think there's a lot of misconception that you, you see online and in papers and letters to editors and everything like that about how much power the town has to, to, in, in development and just saying, oh, no, that's too much, we're not gonna let you do that, period.
I, I think that that's, that's an excellent suggestion. You know, we'll have to circle up, you know, obviously, can't comment on what the ZBA will, would respond to with that, but it, it's a good suggestion, and I think it's probably something that, you know, Aaron, we could probably have some conversations about our, with our communications team in terms of putting something for that effect together.
Okay, that was it. Thanks a lot. I appreciate the information.
Yep, thank you very much. So moving on to the next, I have Neil, is it Thibault?
Yes, it's Thibault.
So please say your name, your phone name and your address.
Um, it's Tina and Neil, we're at two oh three Vernon Street.
Okay.
Um, so we've, we actually moved to Wakefield in two thousand twelve. Town's changed a lot in the last, I'd say, five, six years with all the development that's already happened. And what our concerns are, as you're overpopulating, when do we become a city? Cause downtown is starting to become very city-like. There, someone had asked about the homeless situation. You have a homeless problem and it's downtown. People are panhandling. They need shelter. And I'm wondering, are you gonna be helping them as well with some of this development? Our other concern is just the dynamics of the town have changed. You know, I used to be one of those people, six AM, out, running around the lake by myself. I wouldn't do that now.
Yeah, so we're, we're, so we actually walk around Wakefield every single day around the lake. Downtown, the cemetery, like every single day. And the amount of traffic opposed to say five years ago, it's probably tripled. It's, 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 it's becoming, you, you can't even, yeah, you can't even walk across, like, so we walk a lot. That's why we moved to Wakefield, because it's such a, a, a nice place to live. And, you know, every, a lot of people have a lot of good points, like Brendan, Mr. Sullivan, the person that spoke about the homeless problem. And I grew, so I went to school in, in, in South Boston and now I lived in Medford Inn in Somerville. And, you know, they were really nice places when I was younger. And as they got, but they're not so nice right now. And we moved away from that. I just hope, yeah, to go to less, less crowded places and in a more quaint, you know, safe place to live. I just hope that you, this city doesn't turn into something like a Somerville or, or Medford or Malden.
So, you know, specifically as it relates to, to a couple of questions we've gotten related to homeless. So to be clear, this proposal is related to having a zoning district that would allow for additional housing units to be delivered. It's not intended to be addressing or housing people who are unhoused. You know, I think that anecdotally, if you look at any research associated with housing, as far as I understand it, the not having any housing units be delivered over time will increase the number of people who can't afford because prices continue to accelerate. As, as, in terms of the, the comments related to traffic and some of the neighborhood concerns, I, I hear what you're saying and we'll definitely see what we can do to address them.
Okay, I, I think one of our big concerns too is, and a few people have brought this up, is the overdevelopment, the overcrowding. Like, I know you have to meet this quota, but the minimum, I think, is what the town is looking, most citizens, I would assume is what they're looking for. Cause as you increase the units, you're increasing the traffic and the quaintness of this town will slowly fade away. And that's why a lot of people moved to Wakefield is the quaint, the, like, all those little fears that you do down at the commons. And just feeling like you have a safe place that you can walk around at ten o'clock at night, if you want.
And again, when we walk around the neighborhood, we know everybody in the neighborhood, literally, like everybody in the neighborhood. When you have multifamilies, you know, people moving in and out.
Developers, developers.
Yeah, it becomes something different.
So just something to keep in mind, like, we don't want to lose what Wakefield has always had.
Again, we want to emphasize that we love Wakefield, that we, that, I mean, we, we couldn't think of a better place to live.
No, absolutely, you know, it, I think this is more the reason why we're having these, these conversations to make sure that we can solicit that feedback from people who live and love Wakefield. So, is there anything else that you guys wanted to add?
I think that was the basics, yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving, moving along, I think the, the next person I have is, is it Shayna?
Yes, Shayna. Hi, wasn't expecting to turn my camera on, but I will. I'm Shayna, I'm at Lakeview Ave. And most of the things that I was going to ask about have already been asked. I think I share similar concerns about the historic aspect of some of the areas and the, the landscape of those neighborhoods and wanting to maintain a similar look, but the biggest thing I wanted to kind of ask again, I know a lot of people have brought up parking, and that's one of my biggest concerns and sort of how that will impact the downtown, how that impacts businesses. There's already so much challenge now. I have quite a few friends who live in the area. One who recently moved into a unit that, from a, a home that was turned into a four-family unit that was a two-family. And they only have one parking space and it's a huge challenge because they do have two cars and even though they're not supposed to. So they're looking to move out of the area and, and get a unit where they can have those two cars. So what is, I mean, it's going to impact the area. There's gonna be people who have more when we have snowstorms and things like that. Are there plans in the works for overflow parking to accommodate, you know, the, the influx that this many units would cause?
I think that the, as it relates to the cars that are potentially street parking, I think that's a conversation that the, the town council has expressed some interest in look, evaluating further. This is not the first time we've had that conversation. With that being said, based on that this is a zoning district and is not related to overflow parking regulations, that's something that we, this particular warrant at town meeting would not be addressing. With that being said, we do plan on presenting this to the, the traffic advisory committee. And I know that that's something that they've had some initial conversations that relates to how that would be. And that some of the feedback as it relates to potentially reducing the number of parking spaces came from the traffic advisory committee. So we're looking forward, I don't, and Aaron, can you correct me wrong? That, that presentation, the traffic advisory is, has been scheduled, correct?
Uh, they're putting us on the agenda. I don't have an official date yet.
Okay. So we're, we're, that's something we're focused on, and we're gonna try to get some feedback from them on it and try to make sure that if, if we do end up passing the zoning, that it's something that's on their radar in order so that they can make any adjustments to the relevant parking regulations in town.
Got it. So it's not something that's able to be included, like in this proposal as part of this plan to, you know, prevent issues that will inevitably happen?
So the zoning that, the zoning is not related, so the zoning bylaw does not regulate on-street parking. That's a separate town department, for lack of a better term, that adjudicates and regulates that. So that would be, if, if there was a, a parking ban, for example, that would be something that the traffic advisory would be working in conjunction with the town council.
Right, I, I understand it's too different. I'm, I'm simply proposing, is it possible to, you know, have a more cohesive plan where, you know, I think a lot of people in the town are concerned about what that impact will be and want to see that there is in conjunction with this. You know, if we're going to pass these zoning changes, then we're also going to simultaneously pass some changes to the way parking is handled or the building of additional parking or something along those lines. So, you know, kind of working in conjunction, I guess, is my ask or recommendation, or if that's a possibility.
You know, it's a conversation that's, I think I'll call ongoing, but when we have the presentation to the traffic advisory, we'll make sure that we, we note that, you know, that's, you're not the first person we've had, heard that feedback from.
Yeah, for sure.
Anything else?
No, I think that's it. Most of the other things have been touched upon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and Jim, I'd like to suggest that we are now more than a half over, a half hour over our Q and A time, just to allow everybody to have their chance to speak. Mr. Chair, should we set two minutes for each person?
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm considerate of that. I, let's give ourselves till eight, eight fifty-five. That's, that's another nine minutes.
Mr. Chair, if, 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 if it works for you, I'd propose that, because of no particular order, we've got three more people who have raised their hands. I, I would advocate that we go through those three people and then limit, if anyone wants to, it, it limit the, the public comment to those three, it's next to Michael, Julie and Eleanor, and then close the public comment period.
Um, I, I, I welcome that suggestion and so. But let's, let's leave it, let's leave it with that.
Okay, in that case, Michael, you wanna state your name and address for, talking about what feedback you wanna give? And you're still muted.
Yeah.
Mike Barrett, five McDonald Farm Road. I just had a question on the, on the proposed district. I was wondering with, you know, with the mixed-use properties in the downtown area, why you, you eliminated, you know, the North Avs, the Main Streets and the Albiain Street corridor from the, the general overlay district, and how would including those maybe affect some of the, you know, neighborhoods that are on the periphery? Where this is, you know, where these, these districts already have, you know, mixed-use properties. And this seems to fit in the character with, with those, those areas.
So to be clear, the, the proposed multifamily district that we have does not require mixed use. So the reason, so the reason why we, we excluded North Albion Main is those are where we want more mixed use. And we felt that's where we want commercial activities. So because that, this zoning district allows four units as of right, from a planning perspective, we don't really want four units as of right with no commercial to be allowable as a right on North Albion Main. We want those to be preserved as commercial-oriented streets. So that the worry is that if you have, for example, on Albion Street, you have a number of single, single-story commercial buildings. If you made it so you could build a four-unit multifamily as of right, you could theoretically see a single-story commercial building be demolished and then built as residential with no commercial component as of right. And that's what we are trying to avoid, and that's why we tried to exclude those corridors, to keep our commercial corridors commercial.
Okay, thank you. I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily agree with the thought process, but I understand the point.
Fair enough. Uh, in that case, Julie?
Hi, how are you? I've got a quick question, I.
Before you go into your question, if possible, could you turn your camera on and then state your full name and address?
Hi, Julie Scott, Four Central Streets. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I want to be honest, full disclosure, I was on another town Zoom meeting. I had you guys on the screen. I didn't have the volume on all the time, but I don't think this question was asked. On the Historical Commission's website, there's a document called Appendix C, the listing of properties in Wakefield, the National Register of Historic Places. And the Historical Commission put this together, you know, twenty-five, thirty-five years ago. The bulk of our historic district is found in the Church Street, Common Street area, a lot on Avon Street, Chestnut Street, and a lot of the areas close to the, the common. And some of these homes are found within your district. How would these homes that are found in these properties handle this? So many of them, I assume, can't change their facades. I, I didn't know if there were any special rules or regulations for these houses. And if there were a certain number of, certain volume of these houses taking up some of the streets that you have marked and blue on this map, how would you make up for their loss? Can people add on to these buildings legally? And, and how would you, if, if they couldn't, how would you spread that area out into other places to make up for those potential? How would you spread that area out into other places to make up for those potential? Homes that wouldn't be able to fall under this umbrella if they can or can't? I don't know.
So. This law, this zoning district would not change any existing protections for historic buildings. So any existing protections for those historic buildings would remain in place. With that being said, I I have to admit, I don't, I don't recall what. Historical. Restrictions we have on those specific buildings. I have to do a little more research on to that specific element, but we're not changing. Any of those buildings and the way that the state law is written is that they. Would, because they're included in the area, they still are included as part of the calculations that we have to submit to the state.
Okay, cuz I I had sort of brought it up at the um, the previous meeting. If you could sort of maybe connect with the Historical Commission. I can certainly send you this document, but I'm, I'm not an expert on it. It's just a document that's on the town hall website. But um, it it might mean that you have to, um, I don't know, there might be thirty or forty homes that. You think you can work with in this plan in the blue section that maybe you can't. I I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, so. To be clear, the because this zone. If there are historical protections. That doesn't exclude the the units that are including those lots from being submitted to the state as part of the state calculations. If that makes sense.
But could people build?
So. At all the buildings that are currently in this, in this zone. None of the historic protections would change. And a number of the buildings that you're talking about, basically this entire district is already in. A district that allows two families as of right. So you're just changing the number of buildings that would be allowed or the number of units that would be allowed, allowed as a right. Uh, as that, I don't know the specific requirements as it relates to historical preservation that Wakefield has on its books. Uh, so I'd have to do a little more research as it relates to what that actually. What's on the books right now, but we're not, we're not envisioning or proposing any changes to that.
If I could ask, I I intend to be at the next meeting. If you could, if somebody um, on your board could maybe look into that, I'd like to talk. To that point a little bit more at your next meeting. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh. And then I think the last, uh, Eleanor?
Hi Eleanor Axelrod, can you hear me? Nineteen Sheffield Road. Um. You know, I wanted to echo another uh. Person who asked if you guys could do a FAQ or something on this and and first of all, I wanted to thank you for taking the time to explain this. Um, this definitely new and not um. Working quite as I expected, you know, so I think I'll have to attend another session to just understand it a little bit better. Um. But I guess I'd be curious, I know you've set aside the North Ave and Albion Street. Um, for mixed use, how would that? Like, would that apply or? Or not, like, could you make it apply? Because I think that's a. You know, those are logical places where you could put in, you know, multiple families and have the mixed use and. I know you've said they're excluded from this calculation, but I just don't understand why. So that's my first question. And then the second, this area, I used to live on Walnut Street is very dense. Um. As you said, it's uh, I guess my concern. Is you're not getting new housing, you're sort of. You know, eliminating single family and and um. Dual family housing and just knocking them down or converting them into four units. So you're not getting like four new units, you're getting half as much. Um, and it's already pretty dense, but. Um, if you could. Maybe answer that first question, that would be helpful.
Yeah, so, so. Uh, uh, you know, as a reminder for everyone, this is. A proposed multifamily district that would allow for a new compliance pathway for. Developments to be zoned. That does not change, you know, this is not envisioning changing either the base zoning, which there's certain things that are allowable. And it's also not envisioning changing the mixed use overlay that we have on the books since twenty fifteen. The mixed use overlay district allows for larger scale mixed use buildings. That require discretionary permits, so they're not as of right. Which is the main difference between those those developments and this one. So for example, if you look at like a tonneau. We purposely didn't include all the buildings up front north that because we felt as if those are locations where. Our existing zoning that requires. Uh, more town scrutiny and more of a process. Because it's a bill would potentially those, you know, those, you know, a future tonneau, for example, on North Ave. Would be, would have to go through a more rigorous review process. We felt that was more appropriate instead of allowing it to be done as a right. So we tried to exclude our commercial corridors so that the existing zoning we have on the books could be used. To permit any potential larger scale developments that would be mixed use along those corridors. And so we wouldn't, for lack of a better term, steal a potential development site to cite four units of housing with no commercial component. When theoretically, uh, alternatively, if someone had control of that lot, they could do something that. You know, regardless of the scale of it, would have a mixed use component that would be required by special permit. Does that help explain it?
Uh, a little, I guess what I'm thinking of is you had the sixteen hundred number on the presentation. Which you're gonna fill with the three A units. But then we have an unknown quantity, right, of more housing that could be developed. On North Ave, and so that's what I'm trying to understand is. Like. Why can't we use that to get to the sixteen hundred number? And and I'm sure this is a totally dumb question and I'm just not getting this. Rule and and probably where the Q and A would be helpful.
Yeah, so so the big thing is that the state wants you to have. A district where you can develop. Housing as of right. The units that we potentially could do along North Ave. We could do it that way. Uh, but as Matt mentioned, if we created a zone, oh, you know, that along North Ave. Where we said, okay. We wanna encourage big defense. Big dense developments. You can build ten, ten stories as a right with twenty units. We could theoretically get there and have a much smaller district. But it would be a building that would be as a right and we thought that would not. Be what the town would want because the buildings with a higher density. As of right really limits the amount of control you have over that process. Where we have an existing special permit process. That is on the books today. That we thought would be a more appropriate mechanism for if anyone wanted to continue to develop anything at scale. It gives the town a lot more control over those buildings.
So does this prevent, for example, the developer coming in and proposing a four unit, it gets rejected? And they come back with a forty B? Is that what you mean? When you say it gives you more control?
So, no, so. This district, so. We have the. Bear with me for one second. I'm just gonna go to. So, y- this is our, this is a map that shows the different color codes are the base zoning. So we have zoning in town that is, you've got your business district, you've got a general residence district, you've got a single family district. What we're proposing is doing what's called an overlay. So there's a another set of zoning. That goes on top of this. So you could either use the base zoning. Or you could use this multifamily district. Either, either way, you can use as a valid mechanism to obtain a building permit. So what we're doing is we've got a different overlay district. That includes those corridors that you're, you're asking. That requires a s-. Special permit, so the discretionary permit. So if a developer came in and proposed a building. In that, you know, in those corridors, that the town didn't think would benefit the town and there's a number of re- you know, other. Specific, more specific things that the ZBA can use as a basis of rejection, but ZBA could reject it on the basis that it doesn't meet the zoning. So we thought that was, it gives the town more control because you can reject it based on the fact that it doesn't. Meet the underlying zoning. And it gives you more control as it relates to that re- review and approval process. Whereas with, when you make it as a right, it really limits. You know, you, there's not really as much of a review process. By comparison. So we thought that keeping the 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 scale. And the density and the size of the developments low and spreading it out farther. Would make it so having that be as a right wouldn't be as big of a risk to the town that something that would be. Drastically out of character would get built.
Thank you.
Uh, so with that, with that being said, thank you everyone for for providing feedback. I apologize that we weren't able to get back to a second round of feedback, but. We definitely heard a lot of things and we'll see if we can um. Try to incorporate as much of the feedbacks possible into uh, any revisions that we make to the proposed district. So thank you all for taking the time. I know that this is um. This is definitely a topic that uh, there's a lot of nuance and I appreciate everyone for their patience and for um. For the generally respectful tone of the conversation. So thank you everyone and uh, with that, Mister Chair, I will uh, yield, yield back to you.
Fantastic. And again, um, I wanna thank uh. Jim, you're, uh, you, Matt and Aaron and everyone on the uh, the working group uh, for all the effort um. To to wrestle with all these issues and to thank everybody for taking the time tonight um. Uh, and in our previous meeting and um, on our uh, December twelfth meeting uh, that's coming up. Um. Uh, uh. At our uh, next month. So with that, um. Uh, again, a really valuable conversation and uh, some really positive forward thinking for the town um. On, on all scores. Um, uh. I thought uh, Bill Spalding and I would give a, just a really quick update um, on our recent conversation with. Uh. Town engineer, uh, Bill Renault about uh, our revisions to subdivision control rules and regs. Um. I'm happy to.
Yeah, go ahead, Theo. I know, um, just to throw in there, we did meet this morning with Bill. And Bill Renault, and we have a check-in on Monday, December fourth at one P M to review line by line to make sure. Our um. Proposal is in tune with what the DPW and the engineering and ZBA and they're all looking at.
Yeah, um, and that this uh, we met this morning, uh, um, really just to make sure that uh. We could uh. Uh, pick up the the baton and keep moving forward. Um, and uh, because this has been uh. I think a goal for uh, the planning board for a while and certainly it's uh, relied on a lot of Matt's efforts and Bill's efforts to to really. Think uh. Uh, and and I think very comprehensively about how to to rework and re- reorganize them, so um. And we didn't get into any um, specifics uh. Today, it really was sort of a process uh. Uh, and scheduling thing and I don't know, Matt, um. I don't know if you have any questions, I'm certainly um, would very uh, happy to see. Uh, so that you, you could, you know, participate and we wouldn't have a quorum problem. Um, and if that doesn't date, if that date doesn't in time work for you, then we'd be able to find certainly other, other time as well.
Well, it's good to know that they're just working on it.
I'm sorry. Matt, you're breaking up, Matt.
Yeah.
Uh, it's good to see that uh, this is moving forward and we've been working on this for a while, so. Nice to see this event at some point.
Alright, right. But Bill Renault did give us some um. Comfort saying that. Ours are looking really good. Um, not much of the issues that he sees in. Um, ZBA side of it, but we are um, trying again, his, his goal is to coordinate them, so there's not any contradiction back and forth.
Right, right. Um, and he uh. Uh, yeah, so he's working on uh, stormwater and some drainage uh, uh, coordination. Um, which could give us future food for thought. Um, and uh, he also talked about uh. Um, doing some more research around paper streets and um, uh. That uh, doesn't have to be incorporated uh, as of right now, but it would be uh, something else we could add in the future. Um, and would, I think would be pretty advantageous uh, to, to include um, as we go. Um, so yes, and we're, we're glad it's uh, continuing to move, move along as well. Um. Uh. Fifth, uh, fifth item on our agenda is future agenda items. Um. There, uh, does anybody have anything they'd like to propose? You know, other than the sort of the, the known universe, I mean, bike pad, subdivision rules, um. MBTA. Um. Other general updates. Yeah, Bill.
Well, not to, I I know you just clumped a few things together there. Um, and I just wanted to sort them out. The. Um, town council was presented, um, Aaron and Bill Renault. Uh, presented the bike pad plan and revised a proposal, which town council last night reviewed, had a lot of comments. Um, uh, uh, passed motion um, to remove part of it, but. They're coming back in December to present again for the town council to vote to accept the plan. Now, the plan, just so everybody knows, and if it could get out there some way, um, of course, point people towards the uh, town website. It's a proposal on best practices. It's not a plan set forth each one of the forty something projects within. Um, Bill Renault's, uh, on Bill Renault's list would really be. Reviewed one at a time to be approved, but what this bike pad plan is, is to really look at best practices. So when a project does come up, that these practices can be followed. So um, the DPW engineering and any planning board, they won't have to go back to. The drawing board or start over with any type of research or M A P C involvement. Just wanted to give that quick little description. So if anybody on the planning board um, would like to know more, let me know. Obviously, it's part of my passion with safe streets to help um. Make the streets safer for pedestrians and for people who like to bike and roll around this, uh, the, the town. Streets. That's the only one I could think of right now. Um, I know there's a couple of other things on our list. I think. I'd love to get back to the um. The Barowski and the codes and how that's being written and how. We did as a board spent a lot of time on around the lake. And uh, possible by law review for that. I know that's been shelved. And I think um, I'd like that to come back on once. I don't know, how, how far in the future are you looking, Theo? I'm not sure where that fits in.
Looking at January ninth, our next, there.
Yeah.
That meeting.
I don't think it's gonna be on that, but.
Yeah.
Somehow I'd like the pet bike pad plan to come up as a topic and how it might start to um. Support a master plan.
Yeah, yeah. When, when are you going back? When are um, Bill and Aaron going back to? Uh, town council?
December. Um, I think they have one meeting in December, so the way it was spoken about, there is like the December meeting is what they mentioned, so. Imagine it's the second Monday.
Yeah, so that's right. That's gonna be the day before our meeting. Um. Um. Do you wanna take some time on the November twenty-eighth? Um, are there?
Um, I would, if I could get on the agenda for that, um, and if the, if the board approves, if not, that's, I understand too. But it would be more of a notice and an update. Um, and honestly, it would be good to have, well, I know we've dropped, a lot of people have dropped off. But it would be good to make sure that um, those who are attending, the public have an understanding. That it is a best practices and it's not the plan that's being approved.
Okay. Um, yeah, no, um, I'd. I'd, I'd welcome uh, that update. I think that's um. Yeah, the, the opportunity to discuss it and and share the information ahead of the, the next town council meeting.
And I'll coordinate with Aaron to make sure it doesn't add anything else to her plate too.
Sure, sure. That's, that's.
Theo, I know we're gonna have a close-up for Craig Ford coming up soon. Um. Bill and I were out there and. Talked about some issues with one of your partners that's being worked on. Um, the other outstanding currently in construction is Lovis Ave. And I think we should reach out to uh. The attorney for that and just get an update of where they're at. Progresses seem to stalled on that, so.
Okay.
I don't know if they have a deadline for completion, but we should look into that. It's, it's getting on a number of years now, so. I think we should try to schedule an update just so you know what's going on.
No, what, what was that street name again?
Lovis Ave.
Lovis, alright. Alright. Got it. Um, that's, uh, uh, thank you, Matt. Alright, um. Alright, um, we will uh, uh. Uh, we will, we will also circle back to the zoning bylaw review committee, um, and and where that stands. Um. Um, alright, uh. With that, if there are. with that, if there aren't any other, uh, items to put on the, the immediate agenda, um,
Mister Chair, if I may.
Yeah.
Um, Matt mentioned that, that we have Lovis Ave in active construction. Would it make sense just for our own tracking purposes to just add a note of any of the, the products that we have currently outstanding? You know, that are, require, uh, us to follow up on, you know, as a note on our meeting agenda, just so we have that as, you know, it below the line. Nothing that we need to talk about every time, but you know, for example, we have the, um, the, the subdivision we just finished, which I don't think, I don't, like, we had a number of conditions, but I don't remember how any of them require a follow-up, but maybe.
Yeah.
And I know Matt and Bill, you've been around longer than I have, but does that make sense to have something at the bottom of our meeting with, you know, anything that's active? Construction-wise?
We, I hesitate to have too many things on there because, um, uh, we, we don't have too many going on right now, but it's mainly, basically have three or two in construction right now, another one approved. Um, we need, need action at some point, so I don't know if it's really necessary to put it on there. Um, I'm kinda keeping track of them, they're going on.
Okay.
We could, but right now, uh, the, the lower line items are on another page, so I don't know how much you wanna put it in the bottom of the agenda.
Fair enough.
Okay, but.
Clyde Port's gonna be closed out shortly anyways, so that would be one less to deal with.
Um, I, I think both points are well-taken, um, and it, um, it would just behoove us, um, periodically to, uh, put a, a, an agenda item to check in on uh, items that are, that are, are open, um, so, um, we'll, we'll build that in, uh, periodically. Um, there are six item on our agenda, our items not anticipated, um, and, um, does anybody have, uh, anything? And, um, if not, um, Kevin, do you wanna pick up? Do you wanna, uh, give a quick update on our conversation with Dan Lieber and the Bylaw Review Committee and the Working Group?
For la- last week, Theo and I had our first meeting of the Bylaw Review Committee Subcommittee focused on the zoning bylaws. Um, Attorney Bobrowski was not able to attend that one, but Dan Lieber had talked with him and basically used the meeting for scheduling purposes and to kind of lay out the purpose as he saw the subcommittee. So he wants the subcommittee to essentially guide Attorney Bobrowski and provide him with advice on how we can make these revisions best work for us in terms of planning board and Z B A. Um, what he really wants to do is bring up what's worked well in the past and we shouldn't touch, and what's, what are areas that, um, have not worked well, where, where there's been confusion among the bylaws? Um, signage was one that he brought up, which I, I think pertains to Z B A more than us, but there are some contradictory elements in the bylaws currently for signage. Um, the first area that Attorney Bobrowski wants to look at and start with is definitions, so if there are any areas, uh, that in the past, I'll, I'll look to the foreviews since you've been on longer than I have, um, and, and been through this more, but if, if there are any areas where the bylaws have not been particularly helpful, um, in guiding us or areas where they have been really helpful. Um, if you wanna shoot me a note and just let me know, I can bring that to the next one. Uh, the next subcommittee meeting has not been scheduled yet, but Dan has all the availability to hopefully get that on the books soon.
Right. And, um, yeah, the next full bylaw review committee is, uh, November twentieth, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Um, does anybody else have anything, uh, for the, for the board? Right. Um, alright, um, uh, not, not having any other work, um, is there a motion to adjourn? And, um, can we give, uh, Jim and, and Matt and, and Aaron, um, a lot of props for going, going the distance tonight, so. Uh, motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, thank you, Bill. Alright. Thank you, Kev- thank you, Kevin. Um, alright, all in favor? Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, thank you, everybody. Um, it's a very really valuable meeting and a valuable process, so.